And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the King Jesus Christ.
Roll call members please.
District one, Darrell Juder.
Here.
District two, Michelle Glover.
Here.
District three, Eddie Skeen.
Here.
District four, Michael Bricky.
Here.
District five, Danny Castile.
Here.
District six, Chris Manus.
Here.
At large, Stephanie Addington.
Here.
You all received a copy of the agenda prior to the meeting. Are there any changes, additions, deletions? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Juder made the motion.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Glover. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. We have three different minutes to approve and you've all received a copy of those. The first one is May the fifteenth. Any additions, changes to that?
Was there one on May sixth?
There was. It's next.
Okay.
May the fifteenth, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Juder made the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Manus, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes for May the fifteenth, Carrie. Minutes for May the sixth.
There was a correction in one of the names. Vern Maze, it was M-A-Z-E and it should be M-A-Y-S. Citizen's expression.
Okay, that change will be made. Is there a motion to accept this, these minutes with the, with the name change?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Glover made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll.
Mr. Castile, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes for May the seventh. You all received a copy. Any changes, deletions on that? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Addington made the motion. Mr. Castile, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, uh, minutes are approved. We move on to citizen's expression. Let me read a statement here for citizen's expression. Citizen's expression period is the point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and are, what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one signed up to speak, do we have anybody?
We haven't.
We have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizen's expression. And we've got several different, uh, public hearings tonight, so we're gonna try to limit to about three minutes and Ms. Starnes will keep track of that. Anybody wish to?
So I'm not the speaker for the group and I'm not very good at this, but I am here on behalf of Russell County citizens.
Could I have your, your name, please?
Heather Damrin.
Heather Damrin.
From Castlewood, Virginia. And we would like to thank each and every one of you that had the courage to stand up and send that letter. And in doing so, you protected your residents. So thank you very, very much.
My name's Peter Savatino, nine zero one, Antler Springs Lane, Fort Blackmore, Virginia, two four two five oh, Scott County. We need your help. Our road is deteriorating to the point now that it's a safety issue. We have a four-foot culvert that's in the ground that's being exposed with holes in it. We've put sticks in it, buckets around it. We've called, we've got dozens of, uh, numbers. We called up the number to get confirmation numbers. We got plenty of them. We have a sinkhole up on the left-hand side. It started out as the size of a mason jar. It's three foot wide now. And they came out, we got confirmation numbers. They said, we'll come out and take a look at it, see what we can do. They put two orange barrels around it. That's all they've done. They came out, uh, we've called left and right. All the, uh, residents there have called and we told them about the culvert and they put two orange cones. Still nothing. I've called up to put, uh, stone down and have it graded because the boulders in the roads are sticking up to the point that somebody's gonna hit 'em and go over. School buses come down there. I grade from probably about a hundred yards from my house, all the way past my house, up to the next neighbor's house, 'cause that's where the school bus. The trenches get so bad that the school bus can't even turn around there. He turned around, knocked my fence down. I fixed it. I made an area for him to turn around in and I called up somebody from the, uh, your department. They brought me stones, which was, was wonderful, but they came out, they dumped a little bit here and they put a pile in it. So the guy couldn't even do it. The first day of school, the guy came in, backed in, backed in the trench, 'cause the grass was so high, they had to call a wrecker to get him out of it. Something's gotta be done if you guys can help us out at all. I mean, and the poor guy coming up the road, he can't even open his windows all year long 'cause the dust is so bad, you can't, you know, it's, it's really bad. We need somebody to help us, 'cause I mean, it's getting to the safety point that something's gonna happen. We got UPS, we got another truck that comes up there all the time, we got the school bus that comes up there, afraid something's gonna happen and, you know, if one of the kids or something on the bus, if that thing collapses or goes into the ditch again, I mean, we need somebody to try to help us here because it's been a long time. I've been here for five years now and I've got a dozen of the confirmation numbers. I can only imagine how many of the other neighbors have. And I don't know what else to do. I mean, we've called and called and called and I got two cones and two barrels and that's it.
Well, you're having a good time, 'cause we have four gentlemen that are taking notes right here. These are, these four gentlemen on the front row are from VDOT.
Okay.
And we are gonna have a public hearing with them after a while, but I'm sure they've made notes already.
Right.
You, you need anything else?
What was the address?
Uh, it's all of Antler Springs Lane, up on Starnes Bluff and then actually, I mean, there's a bunch of other things too, because like trees have fallen down. I've cleared at least three of them and we've gotten them off the road and all that. And I know, I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus, but it's the supervisors' trucks driving by our Starnes Bluff and all that and they don't clean up the trenches or anything like that. There's a log, it's gotta be thirty foot long right there on the edge. So if two trucks go by at the same time, I mean, somebody's gonna get hurt.
We have your information in here, Mr. Savatino. We will, uh, assure you, someone will contact you, got your phone number and everything tomorrow.
Okay. And the only other thing, if they're, if they're gonna try and do something, if there's any way that they can contact us, because they're gonna have to open that road up and I have lots of doctor's appointments and if they're gonna do it, I have to change them so we can get down out of the road. There's an elderly woman that lives there too and I'm sure she needs to be able to get in and out of it.
And one, one of the things with pipe, uh, whenever it seems like it's not gonna do anything, but, uh, we have to get environmental clearances and I suspect that our, our folks may be working on getting an environmental clearance before they can do it. But we will get information and then we will get, and put you in on that.
I just thought I'd bring it to somebody's attention because the school season's over and if it's getting as bad, I mean, the pipe's actually getting exposed now, so I mean, that's, that's not good.
We will, uh, we'll get you that day.
Appreciate you. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
I'm back.
All right.
Peggy Tye, Snowflake Road, and I'm here to complain again about Snowflake Road. It, I'm gonna just make it short of what he said. We've got speed bumps, we've got bushes, we've got potholes, and I counted over a hundred potholes on three miles. Some of them are real deep, some of them are smaller. And I've called VDOT and I've got a, I called back in February and my ticket number was one eight nine five four nine nine. They never did get back with me on that one. And when I called on May the fifth, May the tenth, anyway, uh, she said that they could not find the problem. She asked me where the, where this ditch was in the middle of the road and we've been running through that. And it's got deeper and in bushes, you try to get to one side, you're into the bushes. And, uh, and another thing, I have been calling Griffin, but Griffin's office talked to me. But they're federal, they can't do nothing in this state. And I called Pillion's office and they got back with me, but I was out and they, she told me to call back and I called back and I've called back twice and they haven't got back with me. And Mr. Kilgore, I've called his office several times and they haven't not got back with me. And if these people would have to drive these roads every day, they'd get us some money. So, and I wanna keep Snowflake Road on the six-year plan and I don't like the six-year plan and I don't, don't know anybody that does, but thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Mr. Bricky.
Hi, everybody. I came to the meeting the other day, the other morning, I think it was Friday morning, when they had a special meeting about the tax thing. It was a closed meeting, uh, well, it wasn't a closed meeting, but they didn't have public comment and I wanted to print out the law for people. I for your requested emails from Januaries into your May and reviewed the emails and they've been CC and Freedom and every board member. And I'm not su, I, I'm sure that not all board members are aware of this, but CC and emails is illegal. It's breaking open meeting laws. They're also breaking sunshine laws and I wanted to make everybody aware of that. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
I'm Gary Baker from Boose Creek. We ain't gonna say nothing today, but I just wanted to thank our friends from VDOT for being here tonight. And, uh, the way I understand it, they've got all the permits ready to go to start cleaning out their ditch lines and stuff up our way and, uh, just wanted to talk, talk to Wade and, uh, Roy and Sue Wright wanting me to bring it up about their road, uh, all the ditch lines is filled up like Boose Creek is and, uh, up there next to their house at the town hall meeting, they brought it up, there's a huge hole up there where their water lines are exposed and they freeze up every, about every year. And they called VDOT and PSA both and they put it back on each other. That's their responsibility and somebody else's responsibility. So, well, I told Wade about it. Wade said he'd take care of it. But, uh, why I'm here, you know, I'd like to see VDOT put back under the county supervision. Uh, you know, Kane took it out of our jurisdiction back in the old days and, uh, while Yunkin's in there, I'd like to see you all write Yunkin a letter and put it back the way it was when old Arch MacMurray and the rest of them boys was in there and they kept our roads, all the roads in Scott County, they might not all been paved as some of them talking about, but, you know, they took, kept them in good shape. You could pass and get it around them. But nowadays, there's holes everywhere, but I feel sorry for these guys. They ain't got the money to do nothing with and they ain't, they sure haven't got the help. And they needs to be some changes up in Richmond instead of these social programs. They need to be putting, uh, taking care of illegals. They need to be sending this money back to the, to VDOT. And, uh, you know, y'all was talking about, uh, Mr. Kilgore was talking about, uh, putting a big hotel down there wherever he said. What are they gonna do, fill it up with illegals? I mean, really, Mike, what are we gonna do here? We need manufacturing or a big Walmart or something down there or a Sam's Club or something. Something that'll bring in some tax revenue. And I saw in the paper now, we're free to put in the early. They looked like he's gonna leave your real estate seventy-seven cents, but she's gonna raise your personal property a dime. Well, have you all got the final figures from, uh, the commissioner about, uh, has she brought in all the automobile? They should've been brought in in early May and here it is June. I don't think they've been brought in yet. And if they ain't, then they need to be, before you all make a decision, you need to get that exact figure and have her own the money before you decide to raise taxes ten cents.
All right.
Anyway.
Appreciate it.
I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll end public expression and go on to, uh, special use permit.
Good afternoon, board. Uh, we're here for the public hearing on Theda Jennings' request for a special use permit for, on, uh, I just forgot the name of the road, East Carter's Valley. She came in back sometime ago and put in an application. It was back in January, I believe, I mean, December of last year and requesting a special use permit to allow her to set retail sales. And it used to be the, uh, they sold cigarettes there off of Lucy Road, East Carter's Valley and Lucy Road. And according to the zoning, um, ordinance, you have a copy of it, in order to do retail sales, you have to have a special use permit. Uh, she has gone through the planning commission and they have, uh, recommended that be approved with conditional that she get a VDOT entrance permit and a, uh, Virginia Department of Health permit for the septic system. And she has done that, uh, you've got the definition for retail sales and everything. The trouble is, is she hadn't implemented the VDOT portion. Now, the, the, she does have a permit through Virginia Department of Health. There's the application. There's where it is in the county. There's a special use permit for retail sales. There's a definition of retail sales, uh, and the, there is a picture in your packet of the, I'm going in the wrong direction or something. There's a picture of the, of the store as it is right now. Um, or she, if she gets the special use permit, she still has to go through the building department and have an electric permit, a building permit, a sewer, I mean, a plumbing permit, everything. So, um, that's where we're at, right at this minute.
So right now pending, the planning commission says pending VDOT, which is not complete.
She hadn't implemented it. She has a permit written from VDOT to, the entrance has to be off of Lucy Road. It can't be off of, uh, let me get back there. You'll see right there, Lucy Road is, it's at the intersection and the only VDOT, way she could get a VDOT entrance permit is to put barrier up so that the, you'd have to go through Lucy Road in order to enter this, the sales area. She had, the, last time I was up there, which is earlier this week, she hadn't put the barrier up.
Had put it on Carter's Valley Road.
Yeah, it has to be on Carter's Valley to keep anyone from coming out of Carter's Valley into the store.
What does that have to be, that, uh, concrete or something? That have to be a concrete barrier or something?
Well, according to what I read and she has told me and they, VDOT, hadn't contacted VDOT. I tried, but again, it has to, they're gonna allow her to use a railroad ties. Uh, in other words, she gonna take a railroad tie and spike it to the ground so that it won't move and that's gonna be the barrier.
Should, should I have a tax ID number?
Sir?
Tax ID number?
She has to go through Virginia Taxation Department and get a tax ID from, for retail sales. I don't have anything to do with that. That's, and we, the county has no sales tax enforcement, so it all goes back to Virginia Department of Taxation.
David, at, at this point in time, I'm, I'm kinda confused as to what we can do. There's not much we can do as far as.
Well, you, I mean, it's up to you. Uh, it's a conditional and part of the condition was getting a VDOT permit. She has a plan, but she hadn't implemented the, the actual pla, permit, which is the barrier.
If I may speak, I'm Theda Jennings. A man from VDOT came there and he showed me exactly where to put the entrance and, uh, I paid the two hundred and fifty dollar fee and got his permit. And he also gave me the measurements of how far from the center of the road and everything. I have all those notes down in a notebook and he said that I had up to a year to, uh, put that barrier up. And I was waiting until I got a little bit closer to being ready to open. And I hope that everybody knows that it's not my idea, that it's required by VDOT and I'm also gonna put reflectors, that I wasn't told to put reflectors, but people, because that's coming around a curve. They come on over farther, uh, than they, than the actual road for years. That's the way they're used to driving around that curve. And I've been real concerned that that barrier would cause a wreck, but I am gonna erect the barrier, but I'm just waiting until closer to time where I'm ready to open.
Any questions to David or Ms. Jennings?
Any questions?
Would, would not having this special use permit, um, prevent her or prevent you from going any further with? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. No, no worries.
Do you want me to come closer?
No, no, I, I can speak up. I, I can get loud if I have to. Uh, would not having this, uh, special use permit, uh, stop your progress on any of, of the changes that you wanna make?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused. What did you say about the special use permit?
Would, would not having, would having or not having the special use permit prevent you from continuing with any construction or the?
Uh, well, yes, it will put us at a, at a standstill if I don't go ahead and get approval from the board. Uh, because what I have to, I have to get permits, electrical and plumbing and everything and I can't cover anything up that we've already done inside until we have that. So I can't go ahead with finishing the walls inside.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
And, um, I am planning a restaurant in the middle room, uh, but, um, I will be, I'm having to do it separately because I didn't include it. It was an afterthought and I didn't realize that this, that I would have to do something else, but you all will be seeing me again next month of restaurant. And we have a lot of people that are anxiously waiting. We're planning some real food and some regional favorites and everything has to be prepared to go because it's a small place. Okay, thank you.
So you have been approved through the health department?
I'm sorry. Yes, sir, I have gone through the health department, uh, and, um, uh, the, uh, septic permit was including the restaurant. It was, uh, considered all right for that. And, uh, let me see, um, we, uh, had the septic tank cleaned out and we had the line roto-rooted and, you know, did everything that we could do to see that everything, it's on Bloomingdale Water, it's on city water. And, uh, we're doing all, uh, complete new electrical inside and outside.
Anyone else have any questions? Ms. Jennings or Mr. Gilmer?
Uh, on the, uh, barrier that you need to put up, I think that should be done before we approve this. What do you think?
Uh, well, VDOT said that I had up to a year from the time he came and gave me that permit. Uh, I will put it up, you know, if, uh, you wanna have somebody check, if you can give me, if you can go ahead and approve this and give me a couple weeks. I can't lift those railroad ties by myself, but I can arrange work. I didn't want to, that unfortunately is a place where it's there isolated by itself. I'm gonna have a security system, uh, because anything that is not securely passed them down gets carried off. I had some things stolen, uh, that were on the outside and I wanted to wait to get the railroad ties because they're kind of expensive until we were ready to put them in place. And I'm gonna use, I'm gonna drill and put some things, um, I forget what they're called, but you know, the spikes.
Rebar.
Yeah, the spikes down in there and I'm gonna put reflectors on there. And I've told some of the people in the neighborhood, you know, not to be surprised by seeing that because I was just really concerned about somebody having a wreck and getting hurt.
What about your tax ID? Have you worked any on it?
Uh, I haven't gotten it yet, but I'm going to, you know, since I can't actually open the business until everything is ready, I'm going to do that. Yeah, I'm going to do everything the way it's supposed to be. And, um, as far as the restaurant later, I've already completed the SafeServe Manager's Program that, and I have my certification for that. And, um, you know, I've done everything that I'm aware of and I need to do, um, about that. But that is, will be a different thing. This is about the thrift store. And, um, I plan to make it something that I hope people in the neighborhood will really enjoy. Um, I'm going to, I've requested from several families some old pictures, you know, to put up of the people in the community because a lot of people have a whole lot of, uh, very good memories of having come to that store whenever it was open, all their lives. And, um, you know, so I wanna put up some pictures of the different families and I've talked to several people already that are gonna loan me a picture and I'm gonna have a copy and put it up with a little thing at the bottom, you know, giving a little history, telling their names and what they did and that, you know, they lived there in the valley.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings.
Mm-hmm.
Was there anyone else to speak on this matter? That's what I was gonna ask. It's, have a seat, Will. Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
Yes.
Come on ahead. Have a seat, Ms. Jennings, please. Ms. Jennings?
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm Robbie Lewis. I live at two thirty-five Fleming Road, Gate City, Virginia. I'm about a half, less than a half a mile, uh, from where Ms. Jennings is speaking of. Also, I, I wanted to start by saying, I think Mr. Gilmer mentioned in the planning commission meeting that he had received, and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but I think he could speak to this, that he had received multiple calls in opposition to this. We, and we also, there is a petition of over two hundred plus signatures of people that live in that community. And I call it a community, it is an agricultural community, but it is a community. And that are opposed to this. Um, we have that and I think, I think Mr. Gilmer had seen that as well. And just being, and I'll try to be brief, I'm not gonna go through everything here. This is the third meeting I've been here about this, first time in front of this, uh, this board. We've spoken about apartments, we talked about CBD, we talked about thrift store, we talked about apartments again, and then back to a thrift store and antique, and then today we added a restaurant. We're concerned. We don't know what's going here. Then we talked, this is. We have that and I think, I think Mr. Gilmore had seen that as well. And just being, and I'll try to be brief, I'm not going to go through everything here. This is the third meeting I've been here about this, first time in front of this, this board. We've spoken about apartments, we talked about CBD, we talked about thrift store, we talk about apartments again, and then back to a thrift store and antique, and then today we added a restaurant. We're concerned. We don't know what's going here. Then we talk, this is not asking for a business, I'm, I'm as capitalism friendly as the next person. But we're not talking about Main Street. We're talking about a community where people live, people are farming, people are going through there. This is, if, if we're talking about putting this in a neighborhood, all of us know this would never even be talked about. But I understand there are not, there are not deed restrictions necessarily in an agricultural neighborhood, but zoning and planning mentioned they denied one special use permit. My thought is, shouldn't special use permits that are not of right be scrutinized heavily, especially when we're talking about within a community? And then the question was raised, and Mr. Gilmore had to answer that as well, was raised in the Planning and Zoning Meeting, that she could change to whatever she wanted to include CBD if the retail special use permit were approved. Mr. Gilmore said that's his understanding. So at this point, and then to go beyond that, let's say, because there was also mention of, one time there was mention of trying if the property sells. Then if the property sells, does the special use permit follow that? And then I would imagine if it's already approved for a special use, the next person could stroll in there and get whatever they wanted to. Because we were talking about CBD and marijuana type stuff. And I realized Ms. Jennings mentioned, she didn't know that was, that was illegal or anything like that. And when she figured that out, she went a different direction. But we've gone a different direction every time we've been in here. And further, the board, as far as the Planning Commission, all the board members mentioned at that point, well, although they didn't believe that this was a viable plan and didn't believe it would bring revenue to the county as far as tax revenue, who are they to stand in their way? My position was, well, why take the risk of approving a special use when the potential harm to the community far outweighs the potential revenue to the county? That just doesn't make any sense to me. Once again, we're not talking about Main Street. We're not talking about anywhere downtown where businesses are already at. The closest business is, is over on, off of, at the end of the road there as far as East Carter's Valley, probably by Jack's Market, what everyone knows. That's, that's the closest one. And that is obviously the traffic pattern's completely different. We're talking about a road that is lined, the road we're talking about as far as East Carter's Valley through there, not lined. She mentions people drive through there, cut off, they're, they're going wherever through there. I don't think it's safe by any means. And how I see this, and it was mentioned the last time as far as antique slash thrift store, how I read the code, if that's the case, an antique store is listed of right in the code. So a person can run an antique store, so why the need for a special use permit if that's the intent? So at this point, I'm just confused as to why the need for a special use permit at this point, if that is truly the intent. But I think our question, and I think there's a lot of people here as well, some of them couldn't make it. They were able to just sign the petition. But I just don't see the need to go that route. And if the special use permit is granted, like I said, we just don't know where this is going. And I don't, I don't know Ms. Jennings. I know she mentioned at one point, this is a family feud between other people in the community. I, I don't, I don't know her. I've lived there for 16 years. My understanding is that Ms. Jennings, from what I'm told, lives in Hawkins County. I, I don't know that. So I live in the community, these people live in the community. With what is, what will go on with the community, we are the ones that have to deal with that. So I'll keep it brief to that and I appreciate your all's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this subject?
May I speak again to give some clarification?
Ma'am, I, I don't, I don't think, I'm going to see if we've got any questions up here first or any suggestions. Any board member have any?
I do have one question. There was a petition that was brought to the meeting, the first meeting of this. How many names do you all have on that petition?
It was, it's over 200.
The petition, they thought, nobody ever came and talked to us personally and asked us what we were going to do. Actually, on Mr. Robbie's part, it's actually been very detrimental to us. It's been derogatory. We had no intention of opening up a store like that. That was, all those signatures were about a CBD store. Somebody heard rumor and they flew with it. A young man had asked me about renting that town. After I researched it on the internet and found out that it was not legal, I said absolutely not. I said me and my husband had never been involved in anything like that and I don't intend to. And we went ahead, we had started to remodel the building. We went ahead and from Robbie's information and everybody else here, we intend to do the thrift store and the restaurant. The restaurant is going to be in the middle room. I'm going to have a big counter in the, in the main room that's where the thrift store is, where I wait on the customers. All the food has to be prepared to go and they will be placing their order and picking up their food there and going with it. It's not, there's a lot of traffic on that road. We expect to get a lot of lunch traffic. There's been a lot of people that are anxious for it to open. There's been a lot of people that felt like that was a great idea for turning that into a thrift store. And we're not just going to offer used merchandise or antiques. There'll be some new merchandise offered as well. And we're in the restaurant. I plan to offer some regional favorites so people would be able to get something besides a hamburger and french fries. And everybody was looking forward to that. And I don't know why he's so disturbed. I don't think, it's not like we're going to have bumper-to-bumper traffic. I hope that we'll be popular and I hope that we'll be, that we'll have enough customers to make it worth our while. But, and as far as him talking about us living in Hawkins County, that's true. We do live in Hawkins County. But we lived in the county right there for, I lived there after I was married for about 40-some years. And my husband had lived there all of his life. And we lived in Green County due to his work for about five years, many, many years ago. But we are resident, we have, own a lot of property. We own the farm that's all around the store and on the opposite side of the road. And some of these people are so upset with us because we don't allow them to hunt on our farm.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings, I think, I think we've heard.
Okay, yes, I'm not going to get real involved in that. But their comments are not legit. And I don't think there's going to be so much traffic. I think Robbie's concerns are sort of misplaced.
Thank you very much.
But for clarification, we are doing the restaurant.
Or do you have any thoughts?
I'm sorry.
Do you have any thought? Could we postpone this indefinitely until we hear from VDOT, the tax ID and special use permit possibly? And trouble Mr. Gilmore to let us know when something's done on that? Please, that did?
I would at least like to see the barriers up.
Okay.
I think we also need to make, we need to get better pictures because this right here does not.
Show it.
I went and took pictures and you've got a curve that's coming around right there that we can't see and we really need to look at that curve because we're loosey comes out and then you've got the business location. When you come out, you go onto the road, which is East Carter's Valley, you've got a curve that goes there. I think we really need to take better pictures also. Because to me, there's a safety concern.
Do we need a motion to postpone this or just?
No, you don't need a motion.
Is everyone in favor?
You don't. You just postponed it.
Okay. Let's just postpone it. We're going to, we'll postpone it indefinitely then. Okay, Scott County VDOT. Mr. Allen Sumper.
Okay, I'm here tonight in two parts. The first part is to speak regarding the update for the secondary six-year construction program. This is the annual update that we do each year. What happens is that we have a funding program that consists of six, for six years. And each year we update the program based upon the funding that we have. Scott County typically receives somewhere around a million dollars in funding each year. We have about 255 miles of unpaved road in Scott County. And Scott County is in the top five of the unpaved road allocations in, in the Commonwealth. So what I'd like to do tonight is just kind of give a little summary of the plan and some of the conversations that I've had with, with you in the past. First of all, we had hoped that we, we normally are in a position to be able to add a plant, a road to the plan, one or two roads each, each year as roads roll off the plan. As we've seen throughout, much of the, the country has been affected by inflationary factors and VDOT has been no exception to that in the past year. And so we've had to go and take a look at the number of costs that there is based on the number of projects that we have in our plan and make sure their cost estimates were updated so that we could deliver on the projects that were already currently in the six-year funding program. When we did that, we spoke with Ms. Starnes and made her aware that this year, this year, we're not going to be able to, to add any roads to the program. But we also mentioned that we had used up all the roads that we had on our priority listing that we normally choose or pull from to add to the plan. And I think that that's something that maybe perhaps you all have been working on is updating and getting a new priority listing. Do I understand that correctly, that you all have been working on that some to have for, for the future to add roads in? So we have several roads that are pretty far along. I'm pretty confident that next year we will be able to come back and add some roads to the plan. Hopefully, again, unless there is, you know, some unknown astronomical inflation that occurs that we're, none of us here are aware of. I'm sure you all will deal with that with your, in your all's budgets as well with trying to deal with those things. So if I can, real quick, I'm going to run through the roads that are on the plan and give just a little update as to where, where they are. I don't know if you all have a copy in front of you of the, of the plan. Not my report, but the plan that's there.
It's on their tablet.
It's on their tablet, okay. Just in case you wanted to follow along. So the first road that we have actually listed on the plan is, is actually complete. It's 753 Beeline Road. It has been paved. The reason that it got caught on the document is because it's awaiting financial closure and just, it's a, almost like a glitch that it gets put on, on the report. But it has been completed. 657 Greens Chapel will be paved in the coming weeks. Gillon Water Chapel, Route 681, will also be paved in the coming weeks. We have the Federal Land Project, it's the Hodnaw Capital Improvements. We are working on that one. We may have to adjust the add date on that one just a little bit, but that will be built with State Forests as well. Ann Good Cooper Road, Route 689, that will go to, I think that one, there's one section of that getting paved this year. And then we also are going to begin Phase Two on that roadway later this year. 856 Spurlock Road, that one is scheduled to be paved this year. And then 654 Horton Summit will be scheduled later on during the summer. Eaton Hill will be another one that we will be working on to start later this summer. And then we move into the, to next year's program. And the first one on there is Route 660 Obies Creek. Then we move into the next year, Turkey Lick, Route 641. Then we next have, in 2026, Fowler's Branch, Route 697. We have Route 716 Chestnut Ridge, that will be in fiscal year 2027. We have Routes 892 Pippin Lane in 2027. We have 895 Fallon Hollow Lane, that is also shown in 2027. Route 650 Fincastle Road, that one is in 2028. Route 821 Quail Run Lane, that one is also in 2028. 659 River Bluff Road, that is Phase Two of that. That one is in 2028. 659 River Bluff Road, Phase Three, in 2029. Then we have another section of Beeline Road, 624, that is listed in 2029. We also have on there, we had a project that was left off by mistake as far as on the document, but it was been, has been, will be paved this year and that's Newland Hollow Road, 707. That was just a glitch that wasn't in there. And then we have 671 Snowflake Road, Phase One, is listed, is 2030. And then 669 Mineral Hill Road is also showing funded in 2030 as well. Part of the program also is that we have funding that goes to a percentage, a small percentage that goes to countywide rural additions that could be used out of the telefee funds. And also we have money that's allocated for transportation services where that we use, like if we have any kind of studies or anything come up to consider for roadways. So that is a summary of what's in, in the plan. Something, again, to just kind of point out and remember is that we have these projects sit on here that when they receive the funding, we, we start them during that fiscal year. We don't always finish them during that fiscal year because some of them, the length of them, they carry over through the, like into multiple construction seasons. And so they take a little bit longer sometimes to get accomplished. But once we get them into the plan, it's not in our intention to, to do anything other than carry them forward to the construction in the time that the funding comes available. So that is a summary for the roads and the program that's presented. And so now Mr. Chairman, I guess Tom Peller can comment on it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
May I speak again?
Ma'am, we're finished with that tonight. We're finished tonight. Is there anyone that wants to speak on VDOT?
I need to speak about VDOT. On Road 990, back in the winter, just after that bad snow that we had, they came and they moved the end of state maintenance sign. The state maintenance sign had been up past the two homes that we have on that road. It had been up past them and we had given them the land to fix a turnaround there at the end of the road. And back in the winter, they came and moved that and said that it had been up there by mistake and it was up there for 25 years. At, at least 25 years, ever since that road was paved and was taken in by the state. And that puts us in quite a bad position because we have two homes right there on that street and it's on a hill. street and it's on a hill. And that means that whenever it snows, that part is not going to get graded. Uh, I'll have to try to make arrangements with someone. We have those properties rented. Uh, this affects three families. Uh, they, uh, and plus, it makes it easier for the people that live on up the hill to get on up the hill. And, uh, I wanted to see about having that end of state maintenance sign put back where it originally was.
Okay. I'm sure they've made notes on that and we'll, we'll check into it. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I've got property on-
Come up if you would, please.
652 in Ryan County. And 652's been hardtopped on both ends of the road. But in the middle where everybody lives, it's not hardtopped. Why didn't they ever finish the road? It's a dust bowl there for the folks that live there. You know, put some pavement down or something to keep the dust down. But it's never been finished.
Okay.
What's, what's the name of the road?
652.
It's a-
Cox's Chapel.
Cox's Chapel.
And he knows-
Uh, what it is, now, I'm gonna say it's probably a couple miles and they probably ain't the two houses where it's been paved. And then where the houses is really at, now, a lot of them's closer to the road and they're nice, nice places. Uh, that never got paved in the middle. It didn't make sense to me. They should have started on one end and went through by the houses where the houses was instead of paving it on each end and then never paved it in the middle. And it's really a dust bowl there on it. Uh, some houses is pretty close to the road.
Well, one thing I'd say is, you know, if I didn't mention the road as being part of the plan now-
Right.
Then these are things that you can take in consideration when we do get, uh, like next year to consider adding a road onto the plan.
Uh, I put that one on the plan this year. Yeah, I didn't see it ever tuck it.
Well, like I said, we're not able to add-
Right.
Any there. And so, your priority list be where that you put it in there so that then when we add next year, you'll have roads to choose from to add to the plan. So, okay.
Anyone else? On the VDOT six-year plan? Anyone else? We'll close the, the, uh, public hearing for the VDOT six-year plan and open, uh, a public hearing on proposed budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024. On this. So, we-
We would ask if you would, if, to make a motion on adopting the plan here in the-
Okay. All right. So, we need a motion to adopt the VDOT six-year plan.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Manus votes a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Skeen's second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And the VDOT six-year plan is approved?
VDOT is getting, be on the agenda, uh, later.
Okay. And now, we go on to the third part of the public hearing, so proposed budget for fiscal Anyone wish to speak on the budget for July 1st, 24? We'll close the hearing on the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st. Would you take any action on that? And now, we'll move on to-
Are you going to be taking, uh, questions or comments on the budget? As in the public?
Sure. Doc, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Baker's asked about the assessed values on personal property on the snapshot that they, that was taken. Is, uh, is there a date on that? Is that current?
I'll have to look and see what the exact date was, but it's when we started working on the budget. It's been that way every year.
Is it, they take a snapshot of January and it's good through the other years that that works?
I don't think it's as early as January. I believe March, but I would have to check my information from Ms. Hiller to make sure that date's correct.
I did have a couple of other things on the budget. I understand that the EDA did return the 115,000. Mr. Manus, I think, attended a school board meeting or maybe it was some of the school board members in regards to the asked amount of 1 billion dollars.
Uh, asked for 200,000.
I mean, their ask from us was one, about 1 billion.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. And we had suggested, uh, I guess 800,000, pulling back 200. Can you kind of go into a little bit about your presentation?
Uh, it wasn't really a presentation. It was just a, you know, reaching out to Mr. Ferguson and he took it to his board. Um, doesn't appear that they, uh, can find a place to find that 200,000 dollars and they just, that's kind of where they left it at.
Uh, I'll remind the public that, uh, the million dollars is taxpayers' money. It's not school board money. And, uh, the 200,000 was, we'd all had some discussion here in regards to the Tennessee students and lack of tuition. So, that was discussed and that's why we kind of came up with the number of 200,000. Uh, we suggested they just allocate wherever they needed to, to adjust for that, but based on what you said, they did not want to do that. Okay. Now, we will be discussing this at our, uh, at our final budget. Okay. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention to all the public here is the Scott Services Program. That's the inmate program for work release. They have a balance, last meeting, of about 337,000. It's not their balance. Uh, my understanding is from Mr. Kilgore, it is Scott County funding. It's not something they control, we control. Uh, but it's just wanted to let you know that that is, as far as I'm concerned, on the table to be added back into our budget. And we'll, I guess we discussed that at our final budget meeting. I think it's all right, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, public hearing, possible tax levy increase for fiscal year 2025. Do you want to explain that?
The rates. It's on your tablet, the advertisement that was put in the paper. Um, the only increase that you had advertised was a personal property tax increase from a dollar 65 to a dollar 75. You can have your public hearing tonight. Uh, the tax levy can be adopted at your budget adoption meeting as well. So, that'll give you another week or so to think about what you want to do on the personal property tax levy.
Did, um, did we just, I thought we decided to do a, uh, additional tax on, uh, the hotel motel tax, change it from two to five? Do we not have that?
Can you folks speak up a little bit?
Sorry, sorry.
Get a hearing.
We will have a bad habit of mumbling. I'm, I'm sorry, sir. Mr. Manus's question was about, um, transient tax. That's a tax that's charged on hotel motel, uh, fees. That will be a public hearing coming up.
Okay.
We have, it's by ordinance, so we have to have a public hearing separate on that.
All right. I wasn't clear on that. Thank you.
I think the big thing that, uh, changed from last time we met was the Department of Social Services era, which might factor into what we're doing now. And I think you covered it. This public, should public know that or? It was just a calculation-
It's a calculation era in the draft budget, um, that was a $97,000 difference. So, that'll be incorporated into their final draft for the budget.
Come on up.
I don't know if you all understood what I said a few minutes ago. You can't make a true decision on personal property unless the commissioner of revenue brings in them values from NADA and multiplies it times a dollar 65 cents and then gives you the correct amount. If she gave you what she had from last year, that ain't gonna work. She should have already had them, uh, I don't know what the holdup is, but she should have had them values already too. And, uh, you can't make a true decision on that personal property unless, uh, NADA or whoever you all got to do the, uh, values, uh, multiplies that times a dollar 65, then you will know exactly how much money you need to raise. And sit against that damn thing. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Starnes, would you like to address that? That, that's a legal question with me.
I will get the answer for you.
Okay. Any other comments?
I do, sir.
Okay, come on up.
Okay, I'm Susan Jesse. I'm from Russell County. My husband owned property in Scott County. Had no idea that y'all were looking at raising taxes. Don't understand why you are. Really don't. You've got a county attorney for you all. You're paying our 200,000 dollars a year. I don't know anybody in Russell County, Wise County, Washington County, where their attorney is making 200,000 dollars a year for the county.
Ma'am, you talking about real estate taxes?
No, I'm talking about personal property taxes. I think we need to look at our budget again, see where our money is going. Instead of raising taxes on all these people, and I'm sure there's farmers here that farm 'cause I farmed in Russell County. I know what it is. It's hard to make a living farming. It's hard to make a living doing anything these days. But yet, you want to sit here, you want to raise their taxes and they can barely buy groceries, they can barely pay for their prescriptions, they've got children they're raising, trying to put through college and trying to give them a reason to stay in your county and build your economy. Raising taxes is not the answer to this. You want your younger generation to stay here, to love it here. Southwest Virginia is beautiful. Scott County could really boost their tourism if they would just look. I come down here a lot. I go to Little Stony. I go to the Devil's Bathtub. It's unreal, the people out of state that comes down here to just Scott County alone to hike to the Devil's Bathtub, to go fishing in Little Stony. You need to grab what you've got and run with it because raising taxes in this county is ridiculous. It's uncalled for. You don't, I feel like you really don't see the big picture that's in front of you. You've got a golden opportunity here. You do. I don't know if you all love this area, but I do. I love Russell County. I love Scott County. I love all Southwest Virginia. And if we would boost our tourism, younger generation, that's what they're getting into. They love to hike, I kayak the Clinch River, I canoe the Clinch River, I get in it in St. Paul, I come all the way down to Spears Ferry. We've done it time and time again. We stop and eat in Scott County. We've been camping Scott County. But I feel like you do your constituents wrong when you want to raise their taxes. I really don't think you, they trusted you, they elected you to your position, they believed you, they put their heart and soul in where they live in Scott County. And I'm sure all of these people love it. They wouldn't want to leave Scott County or they wouldn't be here. So, I really please ask, please think about the taxes. Just please, focus on what you have here in this beautiful county. And Scott County has a lot of beautiful places. And I think if you all would just open up your eyes and see, taxing these people is not the answer. Spending the money for other things like tourism, getting local businesses started that will draw people in. You've got a lot of potential with Scott County. You really do. And I think if you all think about it and put your heads together and talk about it and come to understand that the younger generation is what is going to keep this county going or they will leave and move out to other places. I'm watching it go in Russell County right now because we're dealing with the landfill. They're leaving every day. Nobody will buy a house. Nobody wants to start a business because of the potential of a landfill. And I don't blame them. I wouldn't either. But if you start raising taxes in Scott County, you're not going to have people coming in. You're going to have people leaving. And then when they leave, who is going to pay the taxes? You'll have businesses gone, you'll have people gone, you will lose everything. So, you've got to make a decision. Either we raise them and we go in the hole, we lose everything. Or either we try to help this county, pull in people from other places instead of trying to keep them out. I cannot grasp that for the life of me, I cannot. So, thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Any other comments on possible tax levy increase?
My name's Tommy Osborne. I live in Boozy Creek. And the last budget meeting that I attended, there were two, uh, at least two gentlemen that work in corporate jobs that offered to be, volunteer their time to serve on a committee, maybe for economic growth. Because raising taxes, okay, every year, this is this fiscal year, what are we going to do about next year? The same thing is going to happen again and you cannot default to automatically saying a tax increase. There are people out here in Scott County that will volunteer their time. My wife is one of them. She couldn't attend tonight, but she would be happy to serve on a committee, okay, and give input instead of how to increase economic growth instead of raising taxes. So, we'll be attending the next meeting, the final budget meeting, and we'd like to discuss this again at some point. Forming committees of Scott County residents that will assist you in trying to meet the budget because it's going to be the same thing next year. So, I appreciate your time, but I think we got to do something different. We got to think out of the box instead of just raise, automatically raising taxes. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on possible tax levy increase?
My name is Michael Sluss. I have lived in this county my entire life. Some of you guys ran your, um, whole campaign on lowering taxes and now we're thinking about upping the taxes. I have a 2018 Jeep Wrangler that last year I paid over 400 and some dollars on taxes. And if we raise it again, how much am I going to pay this year? I, I mean, we can't afford to keep upping and upping the taxes, especially with me. I work for the school system. I make 20,000 dollars a year. How can I pay, pay for more taxes? When the tax time comes, my check is about 1,200 dollars. My Jeep payment, 600 bucks. If I pay another 400 dollars, what am I going to live off of? I have more bills than to pay more taxes in this county. I have insurance. I live with my parents. I don't have to pay rent. I don't have to pay anything like that. But insurance, tags, inspection sticker, taxes, Jeep payment, everything else that's coming out, and we're paying more taxes. We can't afford, people like me cannot afford to keep upping the taxes in this county. And some of you all ran your whole campaign on lowering taxes. And I voted for one that did. And now, we're going to up the taxes? It can't work that way. People my age- People my age that are making barely minimum wage, I make twelve dollars and fourteen cents an hour working at the school system. And first, I'm working summer school to hope I can pay the taxes for you guys 'cause summer school's thirty bucks an hour and I'm having to do that to pay these taxes. So, thank you.
Anyone else? We'll close the public union on possible tax levy increase and move on to unfinished business, Craig. C Core funding request.
This is in your unfinished business. I included the business plan for C Core on your tablet, so I hope you've had a time to take a look at that again. I heard back from Mr. Smith who was at, I believe, month before last meeting and presented to the board. C Core is set to open on July first. They requested seventy-five thousand dollars from Scott County's direct opioid funds. They feel they can average at least five residents, reentry residents from Scott County, and that would be a savings and jail cost if they were able to maintain the five at around ninety thousand dollars a year. To date, they've received funding from Wise, Tasswell, Russell, and Buchanan. And I told Mr. Smith that I would put this under unfinished business for you all to consider again tonight if you wanted to do any funding for that program. And that facility is located in Russell County.
Discussionable memory. Is that, is that seventy-five thousand dollars? Is that a one-time fee or is that a yearly fee?
That's a one-time.
A one-time fee.
Like a startup, to get them started.
And that opioid money, now that is, that is from settlement, right?
The opioid fund is money that we have received from pharmacy settlements that come to the county over the next ten to twelve years. Right now, we currently have about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that will continue to grow in direct funding. The only other direct funding you've done has been for DSS, a small amount. And then when you are doing the behavioral health amounts, those are coming from a grant type application from the opioid abatement authority. So those aren't your direct funds.
What we did, we did give it down to just a letter of support, if you remember last night.
It was a memorandum of understanding, not a letter of support.
So seventy-five thousand dollars, and I think they could annually house five or is that monthly house five?
That would be an average over the year is what Mr. Smith had told me. Yeah.
And that, that would equal out to savings of about ninety thousand dollars annually?
Our inmate cost is a little over forty-seven dollars per day. So if you multiplied that times five, times three, sixty-five, it becomes, I think it's eighty-seven thousand, something.
I suggested to Ms. Darnes that we put that as a stipulation in the agreement or what we're getting ready to vote on, is if we have five people available, then they would have to take five people into the program.
Is that, is that how it would work if we had them available? Or is it based on sentencing? How, how does that actually work? How do they actually end up there?
I'm not sure how they end up in the program.
Right.
That's probably in their business plan. I don't remember if he mentioned how they got in the program when he was here before or not.
Yeah, they were here last month or was it month?
I think it's been two months.
Yes.
If you would rather me have him come back and speak to the board again to answer your questions since you've had time to consider and think about it, or we can do that?
Yeah, let's do that.
That'd be good, yes.
Okay with that?
I've got a question. Okay, is C Core, it's gonna be, they're already open or they're gonna be opening it? Are they gonna be housing felons or sexual offenders? Could you possibly tell me what they're gonna be doing?
It's supposed to be people that are suffering from opioid issues.
Okay. If we have, excuse me, that if we have a felon and it is an opioid issue, that he's still a convicted felon, a sexual assault, anything to do with children, are you gonna be housing those in Scott County?
The C Core's gonna be in Russell County from what I understand.
Okay.
First off, but, and then second off.
And another thing is that I was at the board meeting and they did not approve any money. They turned Randy, uh, Randy down for that. They told him they needed more information about it.
That's what we're gonna do. We'll talk to them again next month.
Okay.
We'll take what you're saying into consideration. Okay, we'll move on to new business. V Dot, again, quarterly update.
Okay. It's me again. So this, this portion is my quarterly update portion. I gave you a report kinda summarizing some of our big activities, things that we've been doing. We've been working on doing a lot of patching, getting ready for our paving and slurry seal schedules. We've been trying to trim some, some brush. We've also been working on some ditching routes that have environmental clearance. And we've also worked on taking care of some of the concerns and complaints that came up the last time. I provided Mr. Skeen some information at different times. I gave him with his survey that he had done with the sheriff's department and with the school bus drivers. We've been working on a lot of those items. I've been providing that directly with him and gonna keep him updated there with, with that. We, we've had quite a bit of rainy weather lately that's kind of affected some of the things we've gone, that we've been doing. We've had several instances where that we've had some downed trees that's reflected into our work orders that's coming out. We've, that's on your second page there. You can get a summary of that. I'm not gonna spend time going over every, every bit of this with you. You have it there and you can let us know if you have questions. The, I guess two things that I will emphasize before I stop is that everyone that's spoken tonight that's been here with concern, that's why I bring these guys with me, is to take notes and everything and they're very familiar. They're working down here every day checking on things. And we will, we will check in to every single one of them and make contact with folks and get an answer to them and see if we can assist them if it's possible or schedule or talk with our headquarters and see where they are with their work plans to take care of some of the items that have already been mentioned. The, the other thing that I wanted to mention is on mowing. We, we've mowed all the primaries one time. The first time is complete. On Monday, we are expecting our contractor to begin mowing with the secondary roadways. They make pretty good time. Once they mobilize, they're gonna have two different crews. They're telling us that they're gonna be starting work in the Hiltons area and in the Yuma area. And Mr. Skeen has asked that we provide a schedule to him. We're not gonna list that by road, but we are gonna list it to you by zone once that starts and we'll, you can pass that along once we get that from our contract monitors, talking with the contractor. And we'll, we'll give that to you and you can provide that to your constituents however you see fit to do there as we move along. It's a possibility that after this cycle that we may be doing more of the secondary mowing ourself with our crews. It's a decision that we're still investigating, trying to see what that would be the best business decision for us to do. So that's pretty well a summary. I'm trying to be quick since I talked so long the other time that I was here. Okay, so if you all have any questions or anything that I can make these guys work and check into.
I have a question. Was the system down earlier this morning? I had a resident to call me about Fowler's Branch Road, the gravel section of that road being pretty bad with potholes and drainage and the digits being, and everything. He tried and then I also tried and it would not take my email.
Okay, I'm, I personally do not know when it's, when they're having an outage or whatever, but they do from time to time, so we'll put that on the list.
I appreciate that.
If I recall that, I think that that's one of the ones that we mentioned that's in the out years for the, for eventual, but we will put it on our list of items to check into.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I did have a few comments.
Okay.
As I've told you, you and I speak quite often and I appreciate that. But this is the list that he provided. This was the school bus and the sheriff's department. I think they addressed every one. Well, all of them have been looked at and I think most of them have been corrected. And there might've been one or two that there's nothing you could do, so.
And there's a couple on there that's breached vision that's out of our control that they looking into.
I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
The, you're gonna provide us with the mowing schedule in general. Is there anything to, we can do as far as litter control to work in advance of the mowing crews?
Like I said, we, all I know is we'll give you the schedule, the zones that we have there with the contractor being, doing their work. You know, they're, we, we don't control and say you mow this road today, mow that road. They're given, you know, those as a whole, so I can't tell you day to day when they're gonna be on a specific road. The zone is the best that we're going to do. Now, when it comes to the primary, we have a little bit better sense of that, so we will take that into account. And sometimes I feel like some of the primary areas would probably be helpful if we had some, some help out there in front of us with that, particularly on like twenty-three or so, so.
Mr. Dingus just came back in, but what we were talking about, Bill, was litter control in advance of the mowing crews. And they're gonna try to give us some schedules so that litter pickup can be done in advance of the mowing crews.
The, the one thing, I guess, Bill, that I asked, are you, whenever y'all did litter control, you, you all picked your bags up?
No.
You don't?
No, we don't.
That's a little bit of a challenge that we have there is, you know, when the contractor's coming through and, you know, the bags are there in the way, they'll just mow around them, but we, we can talk with Bill about it.
It would be safer and more efficient to do a litter pickup after the mowing because it's hard to get the litter out of the vegetation that's three foot tall. And also, it's harder for the road crews to get off the road and, and, or it's harder for people to see them if they're standing in vegetation along the road.
And it is, there's, there's more hazard, that is true, that's there with it. The only, really, the only, the only thing that you have with litter before is that, you know, you, you hit litter and you shred it and it becomes more to pick up is the only, you know, thing there with it.
If there's any residual orange bags in the grass, that would definitely, we would want them to get picked up because we've had that before. The bush hog get an orange bag of litter, it makes a big difference.
I think you're right, but they're gonna provide us with a general area on where they're gonna be mowing and we can provide that information to you. The other question I had was the, cutting, and I've mentioned this to you earlier in the email, Greens Chapel Road and Gilmore Chapel scheduled for 2021 paving. You said it takes steps or years and, you know, people are asking me why.
Yes, I understand. And we, we did have, as I outlined to you, we, we were trying to do all those internally with our state forces. And we changed our work philosophy on accomplishing those. We now have the hired equipment helping us. So it took more than one season with, you know, our crews doing the same amount of maintenance work versus doing the construction work as well. And then, so we've gone back to using the hired equipment. That's allowing us to keep things on schedule a little bit better. But those are to the point that we should see paving take place on those in the.
In the year they're scheduled.
Yeah, well, as I mentioned, when a road is on there, you may not see it, like if we start one this fall, as I mentioned, some of those were, you're probably not gonna see those paved this year, but they'll carry through the winter and then they'll be paved like during the next summer for the, for the most part there with, with that at some point there with that. It actually, with them carrying over like that, if we can do the work in like the summer and the fall months, do a lot of the grading work and then let it lay through the winter and settle out. And then when we come back the following spring, summer to pave it, the paving product ends up being better riding. You don't end up having as many potholes and things come back into that hard surface there with that. So really a two-season construction program there scheduled really gets you a little bit better product in the end.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have any requests, but I've got from two different areas. People wanted me to brag on you for Daniel Boone getting the road down there paved and fixing that cover at Sarah Circle. And also Allen Valley, y'all went through Allen Valley.
Takes us a little while. We finally got that one fixed down.
They were very happy with that. Thank you. Any other comments?
I will say. Go ahead.
Yeah, I've got one. I'd like you to listen to this, what I got from Mr. Campbell at the State Shop.
The Russell train stopped by near it on six fifty. I'm gonna go try to look at that as soon as I get a chance. If we can get by without putting any, we're not gonna put any right now because we're, right now, we're left to fund and we don't have much for the rest of this month. So we won't be putting gravel unless it's emergency. Thank you.
And that's true of all the time as far as that goes. I mean, we, we, you know, what he's really meaning is that we, we have so many roads to take care of. We're trying to be as conservative with it as, but if he goes out and he sees that really needs it, then he's going to be able to or he's gonna try to schedule it. We have a budget each month that we try to do. So if, when he looks at his budget and he knows based upon all of his other needs that he has, what he's really saying is that if I know what my, my program is and what my work needs are, and if I can, you know, I will, I'm gonna schedule it when it best fits into the overall work program of the schedule. That's, that's what our intent is. And some of our folks are a little more polished at making that point than others. But I assure you, we talk with them daily and that's what, that's what we're looking at. So we, we can spend on some of these roads every day.
You stay on them constantly.
Stay on them constantly, but we've got needs everywhere that we have to try to take care of. So we're, we're just trying to spread that out as, as much as we can.
When did it snow? When we had about a week's worth of snow, what month was that?
February.
February?
Okay. That road went straight in seven days. The people has to go just maybe forty yards from the blacktop to get to the trashcans out there right ho. I took and asked for a load of gravel so the people could get out there and have to get up the hill to dump their trash. I kinda got run off from the Ford Blackmore State Shop. Told me not to come unless I had to comply. Now, we didn't have them in February. We didn't have the money in March. I'll guess we got it May, April, May. I don't know if we've got it this. It wouldn't take but one load of gravel. Now, the deal is we're in pretty bad shape if we couldn't get, and when you, you mentioned earlier the rain. The people talks about their cars being somebody where they have to go. Yeah, I've been out there, yeah. I go there pretty. Yeah, I've been out there, yeah. I go there pretty regularly. But if we're in so bad a shape that we can't buy one load of gravel for the people, we're in bad shape. And I'd like to say some more things. There's some roads on Highway sixty-five. I've heard somebody talk about a cone. I didn't know where it was at. We got the same thing around the John Salem Monument coming back towards Ford Blackmore. We got posts in there and got a cone, and if a truck comes through there, a loaded truck taking gravel to V-Doc, it would fall in the creek because it's broke off, and it ain't one spot. There are over three down there. Another one out there, the tile's rusted down, and we've done patched it once, and it's down seven, about six more inches, and it's sinking again. Then we put up a sign uh last year across uh the creek there, let me think. Where it's at uh, right before we get to Raco. We put a load weight sign on it to twenty-seven ton that we always used to gross eighty thousand pounds. I used to run a trucking company, and I couldn't even get a tractor and trailer there now if I was loaded because I can't haul the eighty thousand. Now, there's Highway sixty-five, there's rock trucks going to the V-Doc, and the weight is lower on the bridge than what the trucks is legally allowed to haul across it. And I wish you would come there and check that from the Raco Road uh to down to the John Salem Monument and look at the shoulders falling off where the creek is right there. And that Co Creek is the bridge that I'm talking about, that they cut the weight limit down to twenty-seven ton now.
We'll, we'll uh, we'll check that, and if necessary, we'll talk with our Breach Division about, see what the plan is for that.
Okay. Um, I thank you. Thank you very much.
I did have one other thing. Uh, a resident on Little Duck Road did a petition in the neighborhood, and he's got a hundred signatures, and it involves the Highway seventy-one, Little Duck Road intersection with a line of sight hazard, and I do have that petition tonight. Anthony Odom did prepare this, and he said he got to meet all the neighbors, so he
Okay.
He had a good time with that. But should I present that to you, or?
He is.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Any other questions of Mr. Stunt?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next on the agenda is the Weber City Fire Department July fourth event. There's nobody here representing for the fire department. Were we gonna give, was that contingency, going in thousands?
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred, okay. Do we have a motion to, from contingency to, to uh give nine hundred dollars to the Weber City Fire Department?
I'm in.
Mr. Jeter made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Man is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, if you draw a contingency to Weber City Fire Department. Bookkeeping items, Amy.
Please appropriate seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-three cents to E-nine-one-one's dispatch vehicle and power equipment supplies. One thousand dash three-one-four-zero-zero dash four-zero-six-zero-zero-nine for an insurance claim received deposit at Treasury Office. Appropriate seven thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars to Sheriff's Office Conferences and Training. One thousand dash three-one-two-zero-zero dash four-zero-five-five-four-zero for reimbursements received deposited. And appropriate three thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars to Sheriff's Office DCJS Burn Jag LOL-E block FY twenty-three grant, police supplies, one thousand dash three-one-two-zero-zero dash four-zero-six-zero-one-five dash zero-one-three-six-one for reimbursement received deposited. And appropriate two thousand three hundred forty dollars and forty cents to park golf course merchandise for resale. One thousand dash seven-one-one-one-zero dash four-zero-six-zero-zero-nine for reimbursements received deposited at Treasury Office.
Do we have a motion to appropriate these amounts to these different departments?
I'm in.
Mr. Jeter made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Addington's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tina, appointments?
You have two appointments to the Lawson County Regional Library Board, and you have two, you have two applicants. You have uh one position open, Lindsay Fisher and Michael Slusse, seven o'clock.
Do we have any nominations for the Lawson County Regional Library?
I'll nominate Lindsay Fisher.
Darrell made the nomination of Lindsay Fisher. Do we have a second? I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Usually do it, you appoint by nomination.
We two? There was two, correct, Tina?
There were two applicants in one position.
Did we do it correctly?
No, you usually have a nomination, and then you have a motion.
C, nomination.
Okay, nomination by Mr. Jeter.
Need a motion.
Nomination ceases.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that nomination cease, and we vote by cease, and we vote by acclamation.
And we need a second for that. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Mr. Keen's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it does. Okay. We'll get that down on one of these days.
And you have one position for the Tourism Development Committee, and you have two applicants. Uh, Jace Smith and Courtney Lynn Stedham.
I just want to say a little bit on Courtney's behalf, um she couldn't be here tonight, but Courtney has went through the Scott County Leadership Training. I think Mr. Skeen, I have seen her in there, seen my project uh that she worked on there. It was the Story Wall in downtown Gate City. She really helped get that going, helped raise the money for it. She's been a valuable asset to our community and my district, and uh I told her that she should, you know, uh buy for this. I'm going to recuse myself from, from voting her nominating for her, but uh I hope that one of you all would take that up and nominate her, because I think she's, she's pretty great.
Does he have a nomination then?
Um, nominate Ms. Stedham.
I'll, what is it?
Acclamation.
Oh, I'll make the motion that nomination ceases, and we vote by acclamation.
And we need a second for that?
I'll second.
Darrell's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just Courtney Stedham.
You have staying.
And I'm staying.
Mr. Chairman, could I
Sure.
Just again, real quick, before I say, uh, this is for, for free, God, I forgot to do. This is the signature sheet, but also the, you know, the resolution like we do, all the time to send. We will be wanting to use, if we can send a reservation to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you be careful. Okay, we have Tina, Planning Commission?
You have one position for the Planning Commission. You have one applicant, Jace Smith.
Jace Smith.
Jace.
Jace, J-A-C-E?
Jace.
J-A-C-E.
Jace Smith. We have a nomination?
I'll nominate Jace, Jace Smith.
Darrell nominates Jace Smith. I'll make the motion that we, s- that nomination ceases, and we vote by acclamation. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Addington's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Jace Smith for the Planning Commission. And if you're up today, the County Attorney's report.
You all have my report. I mentioned in there, I think you're considering an exemption for sole proprietor from the tipping fee at the transfer station. If you uh want to carry that out, I think that ordinance is the best way, the solid waste ordinance. We can amend that, and have a public hearing on that next month. You just need to decide uh what amount of an exemption you want to do.
We decide that tonight, or we decide at, at the public hearing?
It would be best to do it tonight, and we'll put that in the ordinance.
Discussion. Our board members possibly.
Uh, Mr. Deal is here tonight. He's uh wanted, we've been speaking about.
And this would be for him and any other sole proprietor, so we're not favoring any particular person but anyone that meets that criteria. Because the fee is going up to sixty dollars a ton July first, and I think that is what brought this up as uh an expensive endeavor for him.
Did you want to speak, Mr. Deal?
Uh, I haven't really prepared uh anything. I just guess I would just say that um we've been, I'm Mike Deal, I'm with Clinch River Truck Service, and we've been serving the county for almost five years now, and have worked very hard to provide a quality service to our county. Um, and we have been uh, you know, just continuing to be forward. We have uh continued to grow. Uh, we're the largest we've ever, we have the most customers we've ever had, continue to take on customers regularly. Um, and I guess I would just say, you know, as a service to our, the residents of our county, it's also a service to the county as a whole. Uh, we are hauling garbage uh that the county doesn't have to haul. Um, and we're, you know, we have been paying tipping fees to transport that garbage, whereas if we weren't providing the service, all that garbage would be on the county to haul and to pay to transfer it and to dispose of it uh at the landfill. And um so, especially as we saw the rates increase by fifty percent, that's a huge uh, it really makes me even wonder if we can even continue to provide that service to this county. Um, it's a, it's a huge concern. Uh, that is, the, our tipping fees are by far our, our greatest expense. And it's just, it's, it's gonna cripple us uh for really, you know, and I, you know, I've had a thought we could raise our rates um for our customers. Uh, not only would, would I lose customers in that process, um, I just, I don't feel like that's the right thing to do. We are trying to provide a, a service to our a lot of our, uh, our customers are elderly, handicapped, um, and we, you know, it's just, it's not a, it's not a, a realistic option uh to me. And so I don't want to be redundant, other than I've loved working in Scott County. I have worked very hard to build this business. Uh, when many people told me that wouldn't work, and it has worked, and it continues to work, and we want to continue to provide this for our county. Um, and I'm just, I'm asking for the county's help uh to help us continue to do that, and um, if this was, you know, I'm, I'm not going to make a request as far as what the exemption should be. I'll leave that up to y'all. Um, the greater the exemption to us, uh, it's gonna enable us to serve more count, or more residents in the county. And, and, and the, I mean, I, I, I feel like long-term, we could be, you know, we could be the solution to the waste management problem in our, in our county, at least, at least to some degree. And we, we desire to do that. Um, you know, we are a business, but there's, you know, there's more behind this business to me, you know. It's uh, we know many of our customers. It's uh, if you ask us about anybody who, who's, you know, who uses us or knows us, they have uh, we've, we've developed a very good reputation, and we want to continue to do that. So, and I'm just, I'm asking, I'm asking for y'all's help, so.
Mr. Deal's uh business hauled uh two hundred and thirty-two tons last year. Uh, nineteen point three or four tons a month. That's the equivalent of uh two packer trucks or about five of our solid waste centers full of trash. That's, that's that much trash that we didn't have to transport to the transfer station.
And as of uh January first, uh our, we've, we've actually been, we're hauling about, I think about thirty tons a month.
Yeah, that, that's last year's number.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're, we're hauling about thirty tons of garbage each month now, so.
Wow. It was forty, and then um it increased to forty-seven.
Forty.
Forty. So we were, we were charging forty, but we increased it to sixty because of the forty-seven fifteen.
I did speak to Mr. Deal, and uh he has three commercial uh customers that he services. Um, in, in the uh wording uh that will be in the ordinance, it's the sole proprietor that is picking up household bagged garbage and residents. Uh, so we, we talked about that today, and uh if he has commercial customers, we can estimate that tonnage, and then he would have to pay the normal tipping fee for that, that type of service.
Discussion or suggestions, but Lord?
For, what again is our uh cost per ton? Uh, forty-seven fifteen?
It's forty-seven fifteen, correct, Bill? That's what our increase was. It went from forty
Or about, yeah.
Yeah, forty-seven fifteen.
Fifteen. That, that includes tipping and transportation for the transfer station.
Okay.
One suggestion is to leave it at the forty, again.
In the higher rate for commercial?
Whatever they worked out for commercial. This ordinance change wouldn't address commercial, right? That would just be how they work that out.
So for sole proprietor, we would leave it at forty?
We need a motion on that?
You would. I'd need a motion to have authorization to advertise for the public.
I'll give you, I'll give you that motion to advertise.
At forty?
At forty.
And I'll second that. I'll second that, or consensus, what you do.
Okay, motion of Ms. Lever. Second by Ms. Addington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
That's all I have, unless you all have questions.
Uh, I do have something. Uh, the lady that spoke earlier had some concerns about meetings and sunshine laws, and I think she was referring back to the Mr. Phil Gore, Mr. Bricky conversation. Were you involved any at all with that?
Involved with what?
That communication between Mr. Phil Gore and Mr. Bricky.
No.
I was in my car at the time.
I've had a couple of legal professionals say that was an illegal meeting. Could you express your opinion on that?
What was an illegal meeting? A phone call between
A phone call with
A citizen and a supervisor?
Mr. Phil Gore and Mr. Bricky.
That's, a meeting is uh, a quorum of your board would be four. A meeting of three or more of your board is considered a meeting. I have advised you all before you ever came on the board to not correspond by email simultaneously, like everybody sitting at their computer writing back and forth at the same time, because that could be considered a meeting, which would be in the dark or against FOIA. I don't, I have not seen you all do that at any point. You're allowed to email each other, but it's not a meeting.
Like on a group email, we include everyone. Is that okay?
Yes, that is not a meeting.
Okay.
Because it's not happening simultaneously.
It's the frequency that makes the difference, right? If we have a group email and say, you know, I send something out, and Mr. Skeen immediately responds.
And then I respond, and then
And then Michelle responds.
Yeah.
That would, that would constitute
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, I have not, any emails that I have seen of you all as a group, you have not done that.
Excuse me, but could y'all stick up a little louder? I'd really like to hear this.
Bill, can you turn us up any?
Bill Ross.
Oh, beep that. Gotcha. Oh, beep that. Gotcha.
Is there anything that we need to clarify that you missed?
No, I don't think so. I think I caught it up.
Well, there is a recording, Heritage TV, and also YouTube. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, you could get on either of those.
All right.
These mics do pretty good for picking up even my mumbling on that.
Okay, we'll move on to number thirteen, Ms. Starnes.
Under claims, you have that in your packet. The general fund balance after claims for this month is seven million, four hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and ten cents. You have a comparison as well. The school system still has about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pull down by the end of June, so that will contribute a little bit to being above where we were in twenty-one and twenty-two. As far as claims for the month, early sets totaled seven hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. Current claims are a hundred and thirty-three thousand, six oh five forty-six. Total claims for the month that need to be approved is eight hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred forty dollars and forty-five cents. And you do have a listing of the five thousand and over claims. If you want to look through those and see if you have any questions.
Any question?
If there's no questions, I just need to approve the claims totaling eight hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred forty dollars and forty-five cents.
We have a motion to pay the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Glover second. Made the motion. Mr. Man is second. All in favor say aye. Opposed?
I do have one thing under Ms. Alanis. I just want to remind you that the Virginia Association of Counties, Region thirteen, meeting is next Tuesday. If you are wanting to attend that, please let me know where I can register you.
I registered online.
Okay.
Yeah, I've already registered as well.
I've registered online. I was gonna ask you about that.
Okay.
So, make sure that it went through.
Well, I hope it did. I have no way of knowing that goes straight to Baker.
All right, good.
Okay, we're down to Board of Supervisors comments, requests, and recommendations. Anyone have anything?
I do have my usual lead-up stuff, but if anybody else wants to go first.
I think you can go ahead.
Okay. I only had three work orders that required follow-up, and I contacted Mr. Sumter with email, and they were addressed immediately. And I had no orange bag reports, so it's been out too long. Meetings attended. I did go to Lina Wisco along with a couple other members, and that was last night. The Smart Scale application for, I think it's the intersection there at McDonald's. Is that the one that they were talking about?
Farida, is that it? I was confused, because I got the natural tunnel intersection.
Tell me what you're talking about first.
We were at Lina Wisco last night.
Smart Scale.
We have Smart Scale projects at both. Is this the new application or a project that's already approved?
That's what I done, I didn't get you down.
I thought natural tunnel, but he was talking about there, I think, the intersection.
He was.
Is the one they're gonna apply for.
The Duffield intersection has dual turn lanes. It's already approved. That will be in a couple of years a project. We've already been funded for that in a round of Smart Scale. The natural tunnel intersection was screened out in our pre-application, but with some things that we can correct, they are going to look at our full application, which is due in July.
Okay, that's the one he was talking about then. I thought Mr. Lawson was confused on that. So, I'm thinking it was natural tunnel that he was discussing.
He mentioned natural tunnel Parkway. Is that?
That was eight.
Is that a natural tunnel, or is it at McDonald's?
It's at natural tunnel.
Yeah, eight ninety-nine or something.
The only thing that's there at the McDonald's intersection is the dual left turn lanes going toward Temper. That, we're gonna change that into dual lefts. That's already been funded and is in the pipeline whenever we get to our year.
Well, it's the natural tunnel, because he said he'd ready to do that application, and he felt good about it.
Yeah. The planning commission will be adding that to the comprehensive plan. You get extra points when a road that you're doing a Smart Scale application on is in your plan. So, that will go to the planning commission, and then it will come to this board for approval before our deadline for that application.
I will back up a little bit. This is the report Mr. Sumter gave me on the sheriff's department and the school buses. And I'll do a snapshot of that and email it to you. But they got them all excepted a couple, so I was real impressed with that. Something that I tossed out before is the, you know, the reason we're working through eight or nine budget sessions is probably we don't have any revenue. Last twenty years, actually, except I think over in Dugan, which we're still paying for that. I would like to do a monthly update, and I think citizens deserve it, on our progress from the EDA department on these three areas, Duffield, Weber City, and Dugan. Not specifics and names, but just in general, progress. I think if we were, somebody mentioned, I spent some time on that. If we were making progress with economic development or industrial development, we wouldn't be going through nine budget sessions. So, I would like to get a monthly update. And I think some good things are starting, things like counting. I think people would need, would like to know that. So, I'm suggesting that we get a monthly update from the EDA.
Would that be an email, or would you want them here in person?
Email would be fine, just so we could read it to the public, so the public would have a general understanding of those three areas.
How would that be any different than attending the EDA board?
You attended that last meeting, right?
Right.
Can you share with us what came out of that?
They're working on stuff.
That's what I'm saying.
Most of it's done in closed session.
That's what I'm saying. People want to know what's going on.
Even if they sent an email, the email would just say that they're working on things. Because they can't violate their own.
They can't violate their own code.
They can't speak in general terms.
I'm guessing they could say there are prospects and?
Ms. Kegel, can, can the EDA communicate with the Board of Supervisors in a way that doesn't jeopardize any agreements?
I think Mr. Phil Gore does that quarterly already.
They'll say until we do it monthly.
That is, that part's up to you all. But he would do what he's been doing quarterly more frequently, if that's what you want.
So, I'm making a recommendation, rather than quarterly, we get a monthly update with a quarterly live appearance.
We can ask him and send us an email.
I've, you know, Stephanie and I have been through this budget process, seems like, since what, March? Seems like a long time. But I've learned that Ms. Starnes is excellent at the financial part of her job. And we had some conversation this week about problem solving. And I would like to ask her to get more involved in problem solving. I think she'd do excellent at that. And the one thing that I would like to, to address maybe at our next meeting is litter control or waste management. We seem to be kicking that around a lot, but never getting any resolution. So, I would like to ask Ms. Starnes to kind of head that up and to make suggestions at our next meeting in July on how to resolve these issues we seem to keep having.
What issues are you talking about?
Some people are concerned about closings during operational times. Separation of steel or the metal.
The metal.
People are still on metal elevens.
Yeah, and they're putting the wrong stuff in the elevens.
They can't manage to, what goes where, the recycling portion.
Well, you can kind of handle that, somebody there all the time, and that's a big expense.
Well, there are other options, and I think some of the things were being offered by the people that work at Midway. Some suggestions. I think we should continue that meeting that we discussed with them. Would you like to weigh in?
I, I think that we need to bring the guys who do work for the transfer station and the waste sites. And I think they need to come before the board, and they need to talk to us about their concerns and what's going on at these sites, because we're not them. We don't see it day in and day out. But they do. They see it every day. And I feel like we need to hear from them what is going on behind the scenes that we don't get to see, that they do get to see.
I think one day last week, didn't they dump a bunch of tars out there at the Raco? And I mean, you've all heard me mention about cameras. And, but I mean, it, like you, you said there, it's a lot of things goes on behind the scenes that we don't see it. And especially the Carter's Valley human, and I hear up towards, above Hiltons, that kind of goes on a little bit too.
When they were established, we had them man it forty-eight hours a week. And the citizens screamed enough to where, and one of them opened twenty-four hours, Monday through Saturday. You cannot man it twenty-four hours. They cut the hours in half to save some budget line up. To replace that same labor force would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you would have to find and put in the budget this year, and reduce the hours they're open throughout the week. Them closing every now and then when they're open twenty-four seven isn't ever. There's no control on that. But nobody in this county has had to wait more than half a day at any time to take the trash out. Now, I never go when it's closed, because I don't go Monday mornings. I adjust my schedule to go when I know it's gonna be closed. You won't go on Thursday, and they'd be full. So, there's, the convenience that we provide causes a lot of problems that you're talking about. If we close them down, have hours, the only way to do that without increasing the labor cost is to use the current labor cost and only have them open the hours available. Those sites are open a hundred and thirty-three hours a week, and we have budget twenty-four hours of labor to man that site. So, if you, if you guys want to close them every day and pay for the labor to man them, that would be great. That would take care of a lot of the Tennessee trash, the metal being contaminated. But the cost of the Tennessee trash and the metal being contaminated will not even reach the labor cost for that to happen.
There's different options. Scott Services is one, and we tossed that around. That's been an alternative.
Scott Services, I've got some numbers, Mr. Skeen, on the hours. I don't have it in front of me. But Scott Services would have to assure that they can provide six hundred, I think, I'd have to look at my papers, six hundred man-hours a week to be able to man these sites. Five, six days a week, eight hours a day, fourteen sites. So, if they can do that and assure that, that'd be great. But then you, then you have people that are out of jail in that program at these sites individually. Anywhere that we use the Scott Service program people, they are directly supervised by one of our employees. When they help us mow, we have public works maintenance people with them all the time. I'm uncomfortable with putting unsupervised people out of jail at a solid waste center. Where they're just there doing it themselves. But I'll do whatever the board wants to do. But we're doing it the cheapest and most convenient way for the public that you can, you can do. Anything other is gonna cost more money and affect convenience.
So, any other?
Do you accept a challenge?
Supervisors comments, requests, or recommendations?
I've got one thing. We talked about in, during the budget meetings and everything that we were having about the building permits. Can we put that on July's agenda to talk about the raising the price of the building permits?
Would you mind if we do that a little bit later?
So, August?
August, September, where we can have time to gather information and maybe see what other localities are doing.
I just know that we talked about it, and I feel like it needs to be brought up.
Yeah. Let's do that early file. That way it'll give us time to gather information and see what other localities are looking like, if that's okay with the board.
And will we have to do a public hearing on that also?
Yeah, if you raise those, yes.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anything else from supervisors?
I'd just like to say that we really appreciate all the staff here. Y'all have been doing a great job. Really appreciate it.
If we're finished with item fourteen, we'll move on to fifteen, closed session. We have one item to go into closed session, and that is number three, real estate. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Go ahead.
Darren made the motion.
I'll make this one.
Ms. Glover second. All in favor say aye. There's a statement I must read on a motion by Mr. Jeter, due second, by Ms. Glover. This board hereby enters into closed section pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one for discussion of A three, real estate, Gate City. We need a voice vote of yes or no. All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed? Take a five-minute break, and we'll reconvene.
Please.